Thank you for.
Nice to be seen and not viewed.
That's true.
I was just dying to use that on somebody.
That was good.
Just reading your notes, so could we go to this budget?
No, it's taken out.
So does she?
Yeah, I mean, we just. I suppose, um.
Are you ripping up my contract?
I'm like.
I think what I've asked for is the 25 extra that was supplemental last year to get us through.
That's on the request list.
You ready?
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
It's one to township, it's okay, your kids are fine.
Right? All right. Call me in order.
Everybody rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Good roll call, Madam Auditor.
Yes. Councilmember Rivas.
Here.
Councilmember Bozick.
Here.
Councilmember Brickner.
Here.
Councilmember Graham.
Here.
Councilmember Jessen.
Here.
Councilmember Paparod. And Councilmember Sims.
Present.
Six present.
We have a quorum, so, uh. I know, Madam Auditor, we didn't, we kind of pushed some things off Tuesday, but what did we do to the general fund? Just for kind of.
Well, the, all the changes that were made, it's a total reduction of 20,435,000.
A reduction, so.
Yes.
I just wanted to set the table for everybody coming up today, so. Kind of the direction we're going.
Yeah, keep the trend going.
Yes. So, all right, all right, so Ken Elwood. Public defender, come on up, sir. Let's, uh, let's get right to it.
How much was it saving so I can add that to my budget?
Oh, negotiations, so, uh, but everything's the same, right? You're, both of your, um.
Everything is not exactly the same. Salaries went down slightly because I terminated one of my employees. His pay was higher than frankly it should have been because I inherited his pay. Uh, I shouldn't say that, he covered appeals and some other things, but I did not give that to the new employee. Uh, but I did keep it and created a line for legal services because I am going to need to, in fact, next month, I'll be back asking for $28,000 from the PD supplemental fund, not the general fund, to pay for like rule 26 hearings. So I figured I'd keep it in there for next year, that way I'll have to ask for less next year.
All right, you just moved that $14,761.
Yes.
So, all right, will you be firing anybody else anytime soon?
I hope not, maybe Mr. McClure.
I'd make a motion to accept.
Motion to second for the changes in the public.
No, that was for Scott.
Oh, the motion to terminate?
Comedians up here.
Yes, they are.
I was joking, Jeremy, sorry. It was for this.
Motion to second for the, uh, the public defender budget, the number's the same, $81,572. Motion to second, I said, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. PD supplemental is.
No change.
No change. Motion to second to approve, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Thank you.
All right, easy. Community, court community corrections, who's in charge of that one?
He is.
You, same?
Yeah.
Did we do it, you guys want to do that real fast? Where's it at?
In our exuberance, did we actually do the general fund?
Yeah. All right, slow down. Yes, well.
We didn't do.
I did, I'm sorry, I did the whole number, you're right, Mike, you're right, so. We'll back out and breathe, so the, I'm sorry, the motion for the general fund, Andy, was the same number, 823. I read the bottom of the page, 823,230.
Yes.
In the second.
Second.
Concur with that, yeah, so all in favor of the 823,230.
Aye.
For the general fund, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Supplemental was 94,000, um, all in favor of that, well, motion to second, we did that one, the 94,000. So then back down to court community corrections is the 81,572. So we did that one too, right? All right. I'll try to slow down then, got a mess. General courts.
Good evening, Judge.
Sorry, I'm in a hurry for a baseball game.
All right, me too. So the, uh, the request this year is for $25,000 more, which was the supplemental that I asked for last year on behalf of all of the courts on two bases, number one, there were less people getting arrested, there was less money coming in through court fees, and because of COVID, there were significantly less trials being conducted. Judge Fish has conducted six trials already this year, I'm in the middle of my second trial now. So, uh, I anticipate this extra 25 is what the supplemental was for last year, so the budget for all the courts should go up 25,000 dollars. That is the request under general court jury expense fee, which I guess is actually down line, three more lines down, 2506. Take what I just said and put it on line 2506.
So there's a reduction of 25,000 dollars?
No, there would be an increase of 25,000 dollars on, uh, Fund 2506 juror expenses, should be.
I'm seeing a reduction on my paper. Am I reading it wrong? It says reduction right here, actually. So do we just get the other numbers wrong? Because it looks like, according to this, there's a reduction on that line of 25,000 dollars.
Oh, I see an increase, it's on my worksheet.
I see it on the worksheet too, I do where you asked for it.
It's supposed to be a 25,000 dollar increase, not a.
In the general fund.
Yeah, in the general, you have it, yeah, we have it up there in the, the general fund.
Oh, it's up top.
Yeah.
So number one, I'm three lines too early, and number two, we need 25,000 dollars more, not 25,000 dollars less. So should we wait for my turn on that?
Well, according to this, that is your turn, right? Because we're in the 1350.
Yeah, so, um.
So Judge, are you asking for the jurors' expense in general fund to go from 25 to 50,000 dollars?
Yes, that's exactly what I'm asking for, an increase, not a decrease.
Is that going to be enough, you think?
Hopefully, it depends on the number of people that get arrested in part, and it depends on the number of trials that we hold. We are holding more trials than we did during COVID. We are still holding trials, but we're actually holding less than we did before. But we're having a lot more than we did last year. So the answer is, is I don't know, but I hope.
I want to make a motion.
There's a motion on the floor to increase the general fund budget for the county court, um, like 25,000, discussion.
Just to make sure we're all clear for it, so that would make it rather than 399, 290, be 424, 290? Agree with that, Judge?
Yep.
Yes.
Is that right, Vicky?
Yes.
So there's a motion to second on the floor for 424, 290. Further discussion, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Why is? Public defenders, public defender supplemental, why is that in there again? What am I, 1,200s?
It's on the sheet twice.
Yeah, all right, so, get that out. County user fee jury fund. No, so that's where, you know, we've got some confusion up here with.
No, it's supposed to be in the, it's in two different places.
So we have to make.
So why, so we.
It is a different.
All right. So, Vicky. The county court, the, um, general fund courts, let's go back, there's, there's a line item that says requesting additional 25,000 dollars.
Correct.
That we just made a motion to approve at, you know, for the total of that budget.
Right.
At 424,290 dollars.
Correct.
So is he asking for an additional 25?
Yes, and you just approved it.
Okay, so why is there a reduction then in the county user fee jury fund?
Because he's reducing it in this fund, in Fund 25.
And moving it to the general fund.
2506.
So that's what you want?
Not really, but I didn't know that was in there. If we need to come back for more, I'll come back for more, I didn't realize that was in there, that had been submitted.
Well.
When I came back last year to talk about the money for all the courts, there had been a reduction based on something that Judge Bradford had done a couple of years ago, and Vicky helped explain part of that. But with the money that you've appropriated now, we should be good for a while in following up on what Mr. Brickner has asked. If we need to come back for more, I'll come back for more and ask.
This is a user fee fund, I mean, what, Vicky, I mean, if we kept it at 70,000 in this fund, I don't.
I think the issue is that that fund can't support.
Yeah.
Money can't, okay.
I didn't catch that one.
She said the issue is that the fund can't support it, so.
So you can appropriate it if you want, but it might give this false, uh, sense of, of availability. If the, if the cash balance isn't there, um, we're not going to approve any claims out of it.
So Judge, was your intention to add 25 to the general fund?
It was my intention to add 25 to the user fee fund, however it got there, it was magic, I didn't care. From the general fund, yes. So what happens is jurors need to be paid, we submit claims, they need to be paid, uh, if that comes from the general fund, it doesn't matter to me, but they need to be paid.
So now your jury expenses is 50,000 dollars for 2020.
Is that the number right now, Vicky? Yes.
So.
Plus he has 45,000 in this line item, right? In the county court jury fund?
That's correct.
So you'll have 95,000 for next year's, what I'm gathering, does that work?
There are, there are different expenses for the jurors, there are juror payment fees for their serving as jurors, and then there are fees that we incur to feed jurors, supplies for jurors, and other expenses that occurred in addition to payment of jurors and their mileage, so this should be sufficient to get us through, and if we need more, I'll come back.
Yeah.
I'd make a motion to, uh, accept the reduction then, on the county user fee jury.
Motion to second for 45,000 dollars, county user fee jury fund, discussion, I think we had it, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, court interpreter grant.
Mr. President?
Nine thousand.
We did not cover public defender supplemental, it is different, and that's what Vicky was, uh, Joy was telling us, excuse me?
Why?
That's a 31100, and this is all different. So I assume we have to approve that too, that's why I was bringing it up, I didn't want to skip that.
I see it, yeah. All right. Yeah?
I'd make a motion to accept, uh, 1,200 public defender supplemental.
Motion to second, all in favor of the line staying the same, 20,000 dollars, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right. Where are we going now? Court interpreter grant.
Uh, make a motion to accept.
$9,000, motion to second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, Superior Court one, jeez. All right. All right, so it looks like it's the same.
It is exactly the same.
212,605, motion to second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, the, um, I tried to say this, is this your guardianship grant too?
It is. I mean, it's not, but it is, I'm here to work on it for the magistrates.
All right, uh, 50,000 dollars for the guardianship grant in front of you, same number.
Is there a raise or something? Because it's red on our sheet or something.
It's, it's new, it's new in the budget process.
We approved last meeting.
You've been approving it as an additional appropriation, and now it's a budget, so.
So I think last week, my magistrate was here, requested an additional 25, because the grant was actually for 75 total, so she just had to have that amount, um, distributed from the grant. She anticipates that the grant is going to be written for 90,000 dollars this year, uh, and that grant is being written by Amber Poff, the IGS director, wish I knew what that was.
I think every year it needs to go up, I like that.
They're looking for 90,000, so I don't know if we can appropriate that 90, or if we have to have a number from the grant writer first. Don't have a grant yet.
Vicky, I mean, it doesn't, they can only spend what they have in them, right?
Definitely the same grant.
Doesn't matter?
We're just, well, we have to double check how much we advertised, we try to advertise everything high in case of, of, uh, of adjustments. So Judge, are you saying 90,000?
90,000 is what they anticipate they'll write the grant for this year.
What do you do with those grants, just while we're sitting here?
So it's money that is used to help elderly people and people who are under guardianships.
Okay, that's what she explained, yeah.
So if they need a lawyer, or if they, a guardian, um, has to be paid, or if they need to have a guardian ad litem, I think all of those things come out of those major funds.
Okay, we only advertise 60,000, so we can increase this to 60,000, and then, once you get the grant finalized, you can come back for an additional appropriation.
That's what I'd ask you to do, esteemed members of the council. Second.
It's a motion to second to make this guardianship grant 60,000 dollars. Further discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Thank you, have a great evening.
Thank you, Judge.
Superior Court two, general fund.
He said he was coming back.
All right.
I'll make the motion to approve.
At 197,279, a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion to second, discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, thank you. Superior Court three, all right. Uh, it looks like the number's the same.
Make the motion to approve.
Motion to approve, a second at 284,538, discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Superior Court four.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Looks like there's a change in four. Looks like hourly to 5,900 dollars.
Good evening, Judge.
Good evening.
How are you?
All right. So, um, what's the change? I remember this, is this the same amount that you came for, for hourly at the beginning, when you had to hire somebody for hourly?
It is, Mr. President, thank you for asking that, so the deal is that we lost an employee, and I hired a new employee, but she couldn't start right away, so she started on a part-time basis, so we actually saved money for the 2021 budget because she was working on a part-time basis, and I needed to transfer money from the salary line to the hourly line in order that I could pay that employee on a part-time basis. She's back full-time now, that budget should, should be unchanged from the original proposed budget of 2021.
So, so we don't need the 5,900, we can go back to the 2021 number of 205,948? I mean.
I had a number of 211,848.
11848.
Is that 5,900 dollars in hourly?
It was a transfer from salary to hourly.
But you're not going to be using hourly next year, right?
Right.
So this.
We just need the original salary, because I hired her at the same rate that her predecessor was doing.
So you need the 5,900, not in hourly, you need it in salaries, am I right?
I will no longer need a, uh, hourly budget.
That, and that's, but that goes, that should revert back, if I'm correct, to the 2021 budget.
Correct.
Everything's in order.
Yes.
So the number should be 205,948, that, that restores it, everything back to where you started the year.
I'd make a motion to accept.
Second.
There's a motion to second at 205,948 dollars. Discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, so everything should be back in order for you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Got it. All right, Superior Court six. So that was.
How you doing today?
All right, I'm starting to cool off. All right. Superior Court's 153,130. It's a motion to second on the floor to keep it the same, Superior Court six, at 153,137 dollars, discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you.
Thanks, have a good night.
4D Court, general fund. All right. So it looks like there's a reduction.
Yes, I was looking at my line items, and there were quite a few that I wasn't using any of it, so I just thought it's better to just take that off, and able to reduce, and then, uh, there are some items that I can submit through the incentive fund to pay for, if all child support related, so I thought I would just reduce the supplies too.
So you're exactly what we've been looking for.
Move to approve.
I thought that'd be a good thing.
All right, so there's a reduction in the general fund by 5,650 dollars, so there's a motion?
Second.
Second, further discussion, all in favor of the 250,932, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, 40 incentive.
That would be me too.
Looks like there's some increases here.
Yes.
A little bit, move some things.
Some of the line items I moved over, because if it's child support related, we can take it directly from that fund, that way it doesn't come out of any general fund budget.
Perfect. Motion to second to improve the 8700 dollars out of the 40 court incentive, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Next year, you will be starting budget session off first.
Jurors putting on the training program. Oh, not this one.
All right, Circuit Court, looks like there's an increase, so I don't even pay attention to the la.
So, yeah, there, there are a couple of changes, and part of them are the 2,585, uh, and the $2 increase.
Right, absolutely.
Those are the ones that we talked about last week when, um, we moved the, the other funds around, so that will bring us current for what those expenses are in those, uh, respective line items. There was one oral amendment that I wanted to bring to your attention, um, if I could, and that would just be a.
Can I, yeah, can we put those two changes, are they, the, the $2 and the 585, I think, is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
That, and she came in front of us and explained to us, um, are there, no, I think, do you have something else you want to change in that?
Yeah, the, the only other thing is we realized that there, uh, if we could transfer, um, from one line item to the other, um, a thousand dollars from my legal to my consultants, we realized that there has been a thousand dollar increase with one of our providers for our quest system, and so that needs to be adjusted, and so if we can scooch that over, but it doesn't change the bottom line for what we're asking.
So in the, in three, so just lowering legal to 8,000 and increasing consultants to 6,500?
Correct.
Is that fine, can we do that?
Hold on. Legal. So that brings us down to the 556,460.
There you have it, that's including her, unless you guys don't want to give her her 587 dollars.
Uh, move to approve.
Second.
Motion to second to approve the, the new number at, um, 556,460 dollars. Any further discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Circuit Court Grant. So it looks like, is it the same?
No changes.
No changes. Motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, Circuit Court Family and Child Grant, number, no changes, motion?
Motion.
Second, discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, Family Court Donation.
No changes.
Make the motion.
Motion?
Second.
Second, discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right. Is that it, juvenile detention now?
Yeah, there's changes.
All right, let's settle in. All right, let's get there, everybody get there. Juvenile detention, all right. So, general fund, looks like there's a state mandated.
Yeah, the dreaded probation state mandate.
Somebody want to get Pop Rod on the phone for this?
Sorry.
Would love to discuss it.
So there's three things that I wanted to, to look into, the first was the mandated probation increases, um, so that, that's one thing. Uh, the second thing is I would like an increase in my uniform and clothing budget by 2,000 dollars. Every few years, we really do need to get a hefty amount of new year's from uniforms for our staff, there's, you know, there's 50 of us, and they go through a lot of shirts, and with COVID, the price of it has gone up, so we really do need uniforms for the, for the gang.
Did you not submit that? Because I don't see it.
It's, it's, there's no changes normally on the front, except the state mandated, we asked if you go back to the letter.
It's in the letter.
Yeah.
And there's a lot more in the letter, but, um, I think I had already reached out to all of you and told you we're going to put a pin in some of those changes that I had in my original letter, but these are the things that I definitely do need changed.
Okay.
And then the one other thing that I would like to request is that, um, the current supervisor, that is at the 47,526, I would like to rename that, um, into a, into a therapist, and I know I had talked to all of you guys in regards to the need to mental health services increased over in the center, um, not just for the detention center, but for system wide. We are in a position that our detention manager is actually retiring, um, and so a supervisor will be going into that slot, so that keeps that position open, so I could refer that into a therapist without any additional costs. So that would be the other addition that I would like to.
So is that, that's an actual salary addition of 48,000?
No, no, it, it will be renamed, just renamed.
Oh, okay.
Can we just, can we do that, just rename that? Is that fine?
Yes.
Without a, no?
Saying yes or no?
Well, when you approve the salary ordinance, we'll rename that position, if you endorse it now, if you say that's fine.
All right.
Does that work here?
All right, is that? Is there anything else in the, the general fund budget that you're looking at right now?
That's it.
So, there's just a proposal of the state mandated raise.
But also adding.
2,000 to uniform and clothing.
To make that 5,000, Allison?
It would be an increase of overall of 38,31.
Okay, yes, yes, the total of the 2,000 and the state mandated.
It would be, yeah, 3,831 dollars with the 2,000 for uniforms, and then the 18,31 in the state.
So you want, for the uniforms, you want 5,000?
Just 2,000 more.
Yes, correct, correct, correct.
Just the 5,000.
Correct. So for a general fund, that's what she's asking, really just the increase of 2,000 dollars to uniform and clothing along with the state mandate.
I would make a motion to accept.
Second.
There's a motion to second, discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, um. Juvenile detention center service fee.
And again, the dreaded probation.
State mandated.
But I tried to offset the cost in the general fund and put in the codes as much as I could, the codes fund is starting to dwindle, um, our collections in that is not as robust as it used to be, um, but I, I think I could squeeze it in there for now.
Motion to accept.
Second.
There's a motion to second, um, for 90,716 dollars, discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. So all this other stuff?
Put a pin in it.
For quite a while, a little while, what, I mean?
Uh, we're still working on that. We will definitely call you if it goes into probation, yes.
We had plans and then the plans went away.
COVID ruined everything.
What?
Because, yeah, I mean, to me it was it's the right direction with all the mental health out there. You know, you tackle that the right, instead of throwing big money at big things, you know, juveniles, we start with our kids. And this was me, I thought was the right approach, so we'll be seeing you guys in the near future.
We'll probably be seeing you next year, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Not retiring, in other words.
All right, um, so that gets us past codes. Where are we at? Juvenile probation?
Yes.
Is that where we're at, correct? All right.
More statements.
Probation. Trying to.
Does that include the?
All right. Looks like there's a state mandated increase. Twenty-two thousand, that's total.
Twenty thousand one eighty-two fifteen is.
So it's showing my.
Can we adjust that, Becky?
Twenty thousand six hundred and ninety-three, what I have is that. So you're saying it's.
What's your number?
I had an increase of twenty thousand one hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifteen cents.
I've never seen cents.
Why is there a difference?
And then includes it, yeah. I'm sorry?
So she's saying that there, I'm sorry, the difference is um, twenty thousand?
One eighty-two fifteen.
One eighty-two fifteen.
One eighty-two fifteen.
The the state mandated raises are are twenty thousand one eighty-two, and then there was a raise that was granted in February of twenty-five eleven, and that's all built into that number.
The number of twenty-two.
Okay.
I think that was in February, right? We took care of that.
Yes.
Let it explain.
She included that.
Okay, perfect, so.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second at the one million one hundred and six, one hundred and sixty-six thousand eighty-five dollars. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
The next two funds, both probation administration and probation supplemental, there were no changes.
Motion on both?
Second.
Motion is second on both. Uh, admin, admin and supplemental. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. All right, adult probation, right?
Yep, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Have a good one, guys. Nice to see you.
All right. Same. Adult probation general fund?
The general fund remains the same, so just like with juvenile probation, we do have those mandatory salary raises, but historically we've been asked to take those out of our user fee funds, so that's where you're going to be increasing about twenty-four thousand, which is one of the next funds that you're going to be coming to. Um, one thing that I do want to make the council aware of is a couple of years ago I brought to the attention that I'm here to fund this, but we have kept with what the council has asked me to ask, so we can improve this in that user fee fund until it becomes depleted and then come back to the general fund. Uh, the general asked for those monies to come back. I just wanted to make the council aware of that, but if you'll see, our general fund stays the same as in years past.
All right. General fund numbers in front of you are the same. One million sixty-two thousand five hundred and ninety-four dollars.
Now make a motion to accept.
Motion is second. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Adult probation supplemental. Looks like there's the increase of twenty-four thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars. Um, also, also includes mandatory raises, move salaries. Trying to see here.
Is this the fund that you said may not be supporting it much longer?
Correct, that's the user fee fund.
What's in that fund right now, guys?
So the cash balance is fifty-nine thousand nine oh five compared to a beginning balance of sixty-three thousand six six seventy-eight.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion.
You make a motion at six hundred and nine, uh, six hundred and ninety-six thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars?
Yeah.
There's a motion on the floor.
Second, discussion?
Second, discussion.
The question I have, this is more of a general, general type question. Uh, when you talk and these are, uh, and and I'm looking at the salaries on a collective basis, so it's the general fund plus the adult probation supplemental. And just for my edification, the um, is there a easy way to explain how the pay is determined as it relates to the supervisors versus the other probation officers?
So there is a salary schedule that is set by the state, so that is what we are abiding by, the management of juvenile probation department that we just reported. So the state determines what the annual salaries are going to be. This year, the increase in salary was one point five percent, so whereas county employees may get a larger set, a larger increase, we are paying one point five percent. Again, that's a salary that's set by the state. It's set um, based on years of experience and then based on the size of your office. So supervisors get um, a, I guess, expected, um, based on um, the number of employees that are.
Would um, uh, would you say, I mean, so is it, is it reasonable to say or correct to say that we have supervisors that are making less than regular probation officers?
Um, in our case?
Because I tried to add up the different salaries from the different categories and that that stumped me a little bit.
So for us, actually, yes, we think um, the people that are making less than regular probation officers based on their years of experience, even with that that bonus for being in supervisory position.
And and you're saying that, I mean, that's all absolutely all mandated by the state?
Correct.
Period.
It's the minimum that's mandated by the state. Now, the county could choose to pay higher than that, but that's the minimum that's required and that is what's currently being paid.
I just think it's odd that you have two supervisors that are making significantly less than most of the other probation officers.
Based on years of experience. So we have some, we have some probation officers that have been, you know. I completely understand what you're saying. It doesn't make a lot of sense, right?
Intuitively, yeah.
I agree with you. It doesn't make a lot of sense.
I just want to make sure I agree there.
If you would like to give raises for all of those people, I'm open to that, but no, I completely.
Can't understand her with the mask on, sorry.
All right, any further discussion?
So the user fee you're saying is being depleted rapidly?
Correct. And the reason for that isn't so much, I, some of it can be thrown on the fact that we're not collecting as much as user fees, however, the bigger portion of that is because consistently it's been. Going up, even if the amount that we're bringing in is relatively stable.
How much should we bring in that fund last year? Um, or this year, I should say? Yeah. The four forty-six?
Thank you.
So we're talking about budgeting more than we brought in this year in that fund? Seems like we're setting ourselves up for additionals next year.
No, maybe it's something we really need to take a close look at. Sooner than later.
Do we go down?
We're drawing raises off out of the.
Correct.
About two or three years will all be depleted.
Say that again?
They're only, they're only about four thousand lower than they were starting at the beginning of the year. So based on that, if you have another twenty thousand dollars, it probably got another two to three years. Assuming that another rates or another fee is actually due at least.
Another thing they take into consideration, so you're, that is correct, that the current number is just slightly less than what we started with, however, it was in March, I believe, that we actually combined. However, it was in March, I believe, that we actually combined accounts.
In order to align.
Right, I get that, and there's some other departments that are asking the same thing. We push those to the end, that's what I wanted to clarify.
Yeah, but I made sure to make sure it was budget neutral.
When you say that just happened, what do you mean it just happened?
I wasn't here, but um, it would just happen.
Just happened?
It just happened. It was arbitrarily.
So you have two people sitting right next to each other doing the same job, but...
And one of them would potentially make a bad move and then they lost salary the next day. So I'm trying to realign it to make it so that it's fair for everyone who's doing the same job regardless of what.
Paying the job, not the person.
So, so. So Jessica, what you're suggesting, so someone would see a reduction in pay for whatever reason arbitrarily, without any sort of additional authorization or oversight, or is that something that goes on throughout the entire county?
No, what happens is that when department heads tell us that they have a status change, like they're demoting an employee, we, we follow through.
So this, it was just a pay, uh, the explanation was a pay reduction?
Yes, punitive usually.
That's frightening.
It's frightening when they saw their paychecks.
The voters got rid of that person.
Right.
You would still think something like that would come before us, that sucks. But that can be done.
So, I mean.
So, can I just clarify to answer Councilmember Bozick's question? What you see before you shows the movement of the full-time position from the general fund to the clerk's perpetuation and the reduction of the hourly, but none of the special raises are in here. So those numbers reflect the first part of the proposal, not the second part, because you're putting off.
Similarly, what we did to Sheriff.
Yes, you're putting off all the special raises till later.
This is only part of the equation.
So she is taking some of their employees and putting them in the perpetuation fund.
It's not that.
That's.
I'm trying to bring up money in the general fund.
But there's an increase to the general fund, though, in what your proposal is, isn't there?
Not in this one, just in the elections.
Just in elections.
This is, this one's budget neutral, but the other department I'm over is Board of Elections and I couldn't propose raises for one and not the other.
What's budget neutral, the general fund?
Yes.
So you're not saving.
The clerks.
Yeah. But you're not saving anyone. We did everything you wanted to at the end. This fifty-three thousand, three hundred and ninety dollar decrease will no longer be, it will be the same number?
Yes.
So there's not truly a decrease? Is that?
No, we would, we would add the, um, wait a minute, where are the raises? When we would adjust the salaries, we would adjust it later, depending on what you decide.
Right, because I didn't take, it would take out the salaries and the FICA and the, um, insurance, yes.
So just in the general fund, what, the raises you're asking for is chief, uh, chief deputy main and chief finance deputy? Those are the only two you're asking for out of the general fund?
No.
Am I missing some more in here?
The special projects. Got realigned.
Okay.
And then the porter, there was a porters coordinator added and a traffic child support coordinator added. But that's, they're not new people, it was just a promotion.
Okay, okay.
The part of the salary that was moved into the perpetuation fund was paying for those increases.
Paying for those too?
Yes.
There's a lot, I have to figure out how to put it all this together, and I know you sent some stuff over.
Are we table?
So the issue of budget neutrality, if, if they did everything that you're proposing, there would be a reduction of two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars to the general fund, two thousand, seven hundred. That, that's all the adjustments to the salaries.
That's for the general fund.
But there would be people getting special raises.
And what would it do to the perpetuation fund, in that example, if it was all passed? Sorry, I thought you had.
And I think an increase of about forty-nine thousand, five hundred.
Thank you. What are we going to do, do we want to approve it and deal with the raises at the end?
Well, I kind of like the idea of.
We would have to include FICA and perf in that, we would have to increase that.
But if you vote on it, you're voting on raises then, right?
Well, just for this particular budget, but the, this, uh, perpetua, what?
If you do it just for them and not the sheriff, maybe that.
Or I do.
Well, if we move everything to the last hearing, we are back lunches and.
Yeah, it is.
I got nowhere to go, I'm fine.
I got a shoulder for you to lean on.
Well then, do you want to table this, this budget until?
No.
Let's pass it as it is and then re-approach it, that's kind of what we did with the sheriff's budget the other day. It might thought, I'm just, I don't know.
All right, there's a general fund budget in front of you with a decrease of fifty-three thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion, a second to approve, further discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, clerk perpetuation, the number's the same in front of you right now.
So move.
Ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars, motion, a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, elect, elected official training, two thousand dollars.
So move.
Did you approve the movement of the salary to the perpetuation fund or not? We're not doing.
No, I think it's all inclusive, yeah. I don't, no, we did not. We, we just approved it as the same right now, Jessica.
No, we did approve it.
Did you approve it, we do the general fund but not adding perpetuation fund?
Nothing has happened, this is all twenty-twenty-two budget stuff, so.
So we have to worry about.
We just have to come back next Thursday, so we can finish the discussion.
No, we're going to assess all these increases on Thursday.
We're not, yes.
If you play, people.
I mean, do you want to move it, you think it'd be better to move?
Uh, wait, let, we moved the position, but no special raises.
All right, so where are you at, the backup?
We moved the position from the general fund to the perpetuation.
Oh, you did that?
I think we should.
That's what, wait, what?
Go ahead and move it to the perpetuation fund as named for it. Correct. Can't get a better deal than that.
Okay, but not into the.
I'm sure we could.
Okay, so.
Really?
So we moved it out of the general fund, but we did not put it in the clerk perpetuation fund.
All right, can we put it in the clerk perpetuation fund then? The, that's the, um, records person?
At the same salary for right now.
The records coordinator?
Archiving coordinator.
Archiving coordinator?
What is that salary? So, we have a whole bunch of documents that.
Forty-five thousand, this is.
With our own through all.
Yeah, we genealogists want to.
She said, what's the salary, I believe?
No, she said, what is the position?
I just said, what's your salary?
Oh, the salary is forty.
Forty-five thousand.
I'll just save any time.
Okay. Basically, it's a way to get more money into the perpetuation.
All right, what do we got?
Do we move it over there?
Um, make a motion to accept the one twenty-seven, two forty-nine on perpetuation fund, am I right? No, one thirty-six, two forty-nine.
There's a motion on the floor, going back over the perpetuation fund of a hundred thirty-six thousand, two hundred and forty-nine. Putting the archive coordinator in there, that we moved out of the general fund.
I'll second it.
Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. We did elected officials training of two thousand, did we do that?
Yeah, we did.
All right. Clerk forty, there is an increase of two thousand, sixty dollars. Does this have anything to do with all the other magic stuff you're doing? Does?
Yep. Boosting her along with the other child support deputies, so I don't really know how you want to do that.
What are you doing here again?
I was just aligning her pay with the other pay and the other, and the general, out of the general fund for the deputies that are doing the same thing.
So her pay was, what are you moving it to?
Her pay was forty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars, and she's moving to a flat forty-two thousand, and that's paid for out of the four D budget.
Okay.
So that's stripped from it right now, correct? But we didn't strip the medical life and perf by accident, or is that?
No, 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 um, the increase in the medical life is due to the commissioner's, um, proposal. There is an increase in perf, um, we don't know exactly why.
I don't know why.
Maybe you're saving more.
But it's out of the.
We always go through all FICA and perf at the end anyway.
Okay.
Right.
So.
Move to accept ninety-three, three seventy-three in the forty budget, clerk's forty budget.
It's a motion, a second.
Yeah, I'm not seeing any change in, with the change in salaries.
It's not, it's going to be added, asked for at the, at the end here, Mike.
So the only increase we're seeing?
It's a small increase, like you said, of, of, uh, less than sixteen hundred dollars, right? Am I seeing that, or less than that?
Right, overall, it's an increase of two thousand, sixty dollars, as of right now.
Do you hear, we're doing a pay study next year, this year?
Yeah, and this is, this is just aligning within the office, it's not even touching what the other counties compared to us make.
All right. So I'd come back next Thursday and, and bring. Bring your A-game, because there's a lot here. Is there anything else that you have in front of us, like clerk forty?
A question I have for you is, like, with the job description and the changes, have you, uh, I mean, you've obviously done your research and I'm anxious to get into the, into the details of it. Um, have you talked with or spent any time with human resources to talk to them about what you're doing or planning to do, or?
They were help, um, yeah, they were help, um, with, um, the job descriptions. They're the ones who told us last time that they had job descriptions, and so we read the, all of the job descriptions, and so that's what HR requested from us, and then, um, we developed our own volunteer, um, program as far as the paperwork and everything goes with that, because, um, HR didn't have anything. So that, so we gave them ours and theirs.
So that, is it fair to say that they're in agreement with the job descriptions that have been created and?
Yeah, I don't know that they would know.
You're.
Hopefully somebody does.
Yeah, you're saying that, uh, you're creating a couple of new, you're just, uh, giving them different names where they're, but you're not adding any new employees.
I'm not adding new employees, I, but I'm trying to compensate them for the additional responsibilities.
I'm assuming other similar counties have a chief finance deputy, is that a common thing out there?
I was surprised at the number of clerk's offices that have them because of everything that our accounting department handles. It's like a mini auditor's office, and we work with auditor's office part of it.
Jessica, everything you sent, oh, the thirty-nine attachments, what was all, are those all the job descriptions?
All job descriptions, and then there's an electronic one of these that you guys.
Which is?
All those were printed.
And this is full of your comparisons?
Like-sized counties, yes, and just giving you a little purview of what the clerk's office does and, um, the records department and the, um, accounting office specifically. Those seem to be the two that people don't really realize the amount of work that gets done.
Well, you do have typically canoeing.
And the number of, um, other agencies that the clerk's office touches.
So black and white and charts and graphs don't go together very well.
Hey, I tried to give you, I tried to give you color, I emailed it to you because.
At four-thirty today.
It costs a lot of money to print.
Four-thirty, you, you had.
She can't budget for it.
I can't budget for extra ink out of my printer.
Did, uh, did you hear the cry over here at four twenty-eight?
I offered to print them, but I didn't want to print forty attachments for each.
Are you going to send that off to everybody, Joey?
I didn't say, I didn't give.
Please.
Now.
Color is the one that she needs.
We have a motion and app.
We're good, everything's good.
Okay.
Yes, I mean, yes, if, I, in the future, yeah, please do it.
Not as quickly as I could.
Weeks, months, beforehand, um, you know, to try to help guide us in everything you're doing, you know, it's.
I understand, I would probably have to ask for an additional person. We were doing this in addition to all of our other things that we were doing, it wasn't just one person doing it. That's why I look forward to your study. That person, that's their job, that's their focus, and they will do a much more thorough job than we'll be there.
All right, well, make sure you're back here next Thursday. And, um, we'll, um, try to decipher everything.
Yeah.
I already know the other question.
You'll be one of many.
Have a good evening.
So, all right.
Thank you.
Prosecutor, I think we've got, right, is that where we're at? Prosecutor general fund. Gary, did you email us anything at four-thirty?
That's a good thing.
All right.
Good evening.
Gary, um, so, your general fund obviously is the same because that's what we asked you to present.
Second.
There's a motion, a second on the floor to approve the general fund, the same. But, you know, just to give you your fair time like everybody else, I mean, that's, you have some proposed changes, though, correct?
I do.
So. Yes, they're proposed, but just like everything else, he's turned in the same budget that was requested, so. And, you know, just give him, you know, the proper time, you want to dive into what you're, you're proposing on the side here?
And do you have, uh, the information?
We all, yes, we've all had, yeah. By the dumb, yeah.
Yeah, so, the proposals are intended to bring us into the twenty-first century, second century, twenty-third century, because we're trying to catch up from nothing that's really been done in prosecutor's office, or clerk of prosecutor's office is basically nineteen ninety. And we, we've talked about this before, um, and that's reflected in the, uh, budget information that I gave you last year and then to update, uh, that you have issued. Um, and those are the numbers, they, they come from the court administrator's office, um, and, you know, the numbers that I've estimated, I've done my best to contact public vendors, for example, and get the actual case statistics that we're asking. Um, I have, uh, had to hire new people, as other people have left our higher-paying jobs. Uh, it's getting to the point where, uh, I've been really lucky to have found replacements that I have, uh, found. Um, but it's going to come to the point where you're going to be asking me, for example, to hire the bottom third of the graduating law school. I'm not going to do it, uh, because I think that's only going to create more problems for us and our community if, unless we start getting good lawyers. Same applies to our court managers. Uh, it's not going to be too long before I'm going to be competing with the fast food industry for, our receptionist and court managers, uh, based on the amount that they're paid. I've suggested that you do a job study and compare, uh, the job descriptions that our staff does, both as lawyers and as court managers, uh, to, to compare them to other counties with whom we are competing of our, uh, quality staff. We got down to a, the last, um, applicant, and this is at a time when, when I first took office, I would get twenty, twenty-five applications for a job open. The last time we got four, we got down to the very last one, and I looked at Sheila and I said, I, this is not going to work. I just do not think this girl is going to be able to do the job. And Sheila said to me, hey, look, I think, uh, there's a girl that, uh, I really like, and she worked at the chocolate factory. Chocolate factory had been shut down because COVID. But this is a girl, and Sheila went in there, she would know your order, she would know exactly what you wanted, and there would be eight people standing in line, and she'd have all those drinks, uh, ready to go. We hired her, we got lucky, and she's been a, a great addition to our staff. But that's not going to happen very much longer. Uh, I wanted to hire a new, a lawyer from Hebron, and I thought, hey, this is great, we got a, a local person from Hebron, and, um, when we get him on staff, he'll be back in his home community with his family. He's working as a deputy prosecutor in Lafayette, just graduated law school, it'll be a year ago now. Uh, we told him what the salary was, he was already making seven or eight thousand dollars more than our, our starting salary, and at the beginning of the year, he expects to be making seventy-two to seventy-four thousand dollars a year, which is what you're paying our, um, our supervisor in the North County Council of the Council. Uh, supervising our lawyers there and our staff, and he's been there for, I'm going to say, twenty years. Now, sooner or later, the bridge is going to break, and I'm just trying to get a, a jump on it. So, just look at those numbers, uh, though, I did not pull those out of the hat. I've looked at what other, um, staffs are being paid in competitively sized counties, including Lake County. It used to be that we would be able to, um, to hire a lawyer out of the Lake County prosecutor's office to come work here. It's not going to be long, or it's going to be the other way around. So, uh, that's the pitch, uh, I get it, uh, but when I, and I will say this, when I first, uh, came before you in nineteen, two thousand nineteen, and asked for additional people, I was told then, uh, no one has ever asked before. Then, when I came back and asked, uh, again, I was told, well, listen, there's no, there's no basis for this. There's, there's nothing to support what you're saying, well, now I have done both. I'm asking, and I've given you other numbers. Now, where that money comes from, that's up to you guys, but, uh, I get it, actually, I made a mistake. I asked for three new lawyers at sixty-eight thousand dollars a year. That should actually be three lawyers at about ninety-five thousand dollars a year. We need lawyers in our upper-level felony courts, because it's going to happen where we're going to get flooded with more and more serious cases in Porter County. And more and more serious cases because everybody's got a gun, everybody wants to fight with police, and now we've gotten really good, and starting to get better, I guess is a better way to say it, and investigating child exportation cases, internet crimes against kids cases, and the production, uh, of child pornography, sex trafficking, all of which is going on in Porter County. If I could tell you what was going on in Porter County right now, you would all turn blue. And that's only going to get worse. So, we're either going to be prepared for it, or we're not. And again, this isn't your fault, this is thirty years of a buildup. Uh, and, sorry to say, but, um, that's kind of where we are. The other part about this is that, in the prosecutor's office, honestly, we're the gatekeepers, because really, nothing happens. And we will, as we say, it's okay. We're the ones that file the cases, we're the ones that dismiss the cases. We're the ones, if we get overrun, then, uh, we are not, we're going to have to make some pretty, uh, tough decisions about which cases we're going to have to try and which ones we're not. We were in a situation this week, we potentially had two trials going on, Rebecca Penney's the trial last week, um, and Mary and Harry are preparing, preparing for a trial on Monday. This isn't just something that you sit down and look at a piece of paper a couple of times and then walk into a courtroom. This is hours and hours of preparation if we're going to do it right, and I insist on that. I know what it's like to get a case ready for trial and to do it right, and that's what I expect from the people who work in our office and who represent you and the other eight hundred and eighty thousand people who live here. So, it's, for me, it's a call to action. So, the numbers we have, as, as I said, the numbers you have before you is meant for us to get ahead of curve and to be competitive with, uh, all the other, uh, counties. We have a totally different philosophy in, in the prosecution, and some of our non-violent offenders is working, uh, but we need more people in order to monitor that part of what we do as well, as well as to address, uh, effectively, all of the serious crimes that take place in Porter County. Um, so, there you have it, that's the pitch. Um, I'm going to be out of town next week, but if you want somebody here in our office, there will be somebody here, um, to, uh, address this, and I can explain all these numbers, uh, that I've put into you of last year and this year.
Thank you, yeah, I, I mean, I would, I mean, it's up to you, but I would have somebody here Thursday, you know, to see how things shake out. And, you know, I, I think I said it last year, Gary, I knew, I mean, you're not going to stop coming, and that's your job. You believe strongly in, you know, where you want this office to go, and, you know, I, I can appreciate that. Is, the closing of VU, is that having an effect on, on your ability to?
Uh, we lost a couple of things, one, we lost interns. So, we have gone to, um, Chicago, and we moved on to Notre Dame. Uh, we were really fortunate this summer, we found two interns who actually are from Porter County, who are going to the University of Illinois in Chicago, who are interns this summer, so now we've got a contact there. So the other thing we lost is our access to, uh, graduating, um, lawyers, who, you know, they come here, they stay here, but they're here for three years, they love the community. You know, they're married, they like the community, they want to stay here, and that's what happened to me. Uh, you came home, I'm not from here, and neither is my wife. Uh, I, once we were here for, together for three years, it's like, okay, that's, we like this town. It was a whole different look to us and feel to us, once we were married and I graduated, and so this is why we stayed here. Uh, but that still doesn't solve the problem that they're going to leave. Uh, if it's still at VU, and I go out and get a hundred million dollars, um, when, when they leave and when they rest, and like I said, I really don't want to hire them, I'm a third of a law school class, and I will tell you, I'm not going to. We'll just have to make do, uh, and I'm not going to hire somebody who qualified to work in the academy if you're even somehow, you know, a court man. So, I'm lucky.
So Gary, what, I understand what you're doing with the proposed increases, and, you know, we are, and if everything you're saying, you know, I, you've done your homework, but we're going to do the wage study. So is that everything you're saying proposing should, you know, probably come back in line with that wage study that really smacks us in the face, as Gary's been telling us this for a couple of years? But the increase in staff, you know, we, I don't know exactly how this works, but, you know, I think the state tells us by caseload if we need a new judge, but they, they haven't told us that. So, with not needing a new judge because of the caseload, does, shouldn't that fall in line with not needing more prosecutors and not needing more court managers too, if we don't?
Yeah, okay, so, but, um.
I'm not completely educated on the whole thing, so that's why I'm asking, I mean.
So, the, needing a new judge, is anything, you know, more than just, you know, taking all the other cases, um, that are taking place? What is happening, happening in criminal cases is that, one, they're becoming more serious, but they're becoming more common. You know, the child arrest case that was tried thirty years ago is not the same as it was today, it's a bit science, and the rules about the way in which a victim can be questioned. Uh, we have all kinds of tech, technical, uh, evidence available to us now, cell phone towers, tracking, uh, all that kind of stuff that goes into the case. The counter-curder trial had over eight hundred exits. That's not the case that, uh, would have been thirty years ago. So, what that does is it creates so much more pressure on us as lawyers, and a pressure on our staff to put all of that together. So it is not just numbers that it is, uh, which are up, but it's the seriousness within those numbers that, uh, that we, that we need to keep up. Um, there are things I would say to you privately about that, but I do not want to say them publicly, I said that to you, uh, tonight. Uh, so if you want to visit with me, I'm glad to talk about that, um, but, as I said, I'm not going to say some of those things publicly.
Gary, I'm, I'm trying to follow the numbers a bit here, so, I mean, this is, this concerns the caseloads. So, in looking at, uh, page number six, if that's helpful, that kind of gives Porter County review nine to ninety, two thousand, two thousand and five, so forth. And then at two, in two thousand fifteen, new felony cases, fourteen thirty-eight, new misdemeanor cases, thirty-five sixty-eight, new juvenile delinquency, three ninety-seven. And then on the page before that, it talks about two thousand nineteen, where it says, and I don't know if that's just coincidental, the new felony cases, fourteen hundred thirty-eight, same number.
Very close.
And, uh, the misdemeanor cases are very, very similar. Uh, and so that, uh, juvenile delinquency cases are up, but it, it almost would tell you that from two thousand fifteen to two thousand nineteen, we haven't had, uh, more new felony cases specifically. Am I getting that right?
Well, two thousand twenty is a little, a little bit of an aberration, because we really didn't file anything from the larger part until, uh, probably the middle of July. Basically, uh, my conversation with the police officer was basically, unless somebody runs into you in a police car, uh, don't arrest anybody. Well, it happened twice, some people got arrested because of their drunk. Uh, but, uh, yeah.
Are you kidding?
Are you kidding?
So, are these two thousand nineteen or two thousand twenty figures?
I'm looking at...
Page number five.
Are you looking at by the numbers or by the numbers twenty twenty-one?
He may be looking at the...
By the numbers.
The older book, yeah.
You're looking at the first one, okay.
Not the updated, yeah.
First one and the second one.
Which, yeah, I'm not sure which.
He's looking at the first one, by the numbers.
Page five, Gary.
Oh, I'm sorry, I see it.
I'm just trying to understand or follow the caseload numbers is what I'm getting at.
Okay, um, those, um, I'm sorry, ask me again your question.
So, in two thousand fifteen, it reported on page six, new felony cases one thousand four hundred thirty-eight. And on the page prior, Porter County two thousand nineteen, it says new felony cases one thousand four hundred thirty-eight. And I'm asking, is that just coincidental or...
I probably made a mistake. Uh, cause I, I say, I can look, I'll have that for you on Thursday, but I think that two thousand nineteen figure is high.
I think where Mike's going is, you know...
So, the two thousand fifteen number is a little, it's a terrible number. Because in two thousand fifteen, if you stole ten dollars from a hate market, that was filed as a felony. There was a change in the law in about two thousand eight seventeen, changed that so that the value of it, that had to be over seven hundred fifty dollars. So, there were a ton of cases that would file as felonies in that period of time, that are not even felonies now, and we would even file those as felonies, even if there were something left out.
So, you would say that these are more, the ones that you're recounting in two thousand nineteen now are more serious?
Yes, yeah.
And therefore more complicated and more involved and all that?
Yeah, right. If you file it down as felony, it's fine.
Yeah, I'm just gonna share.
Yeah.
You know, uh, not to be biased, but, um, I understand, you know, where the prosecutor's coming from and we're living in a, we were just talking on the way in here, you know, we're living in a much more violent society. That's to me, I mean, that's a gift. Um, and I think that one of the things that we've talked about, even as a council, and can share privately is, you know, one of the things that makes Porter County so attractive is safety. I think the Prosecutor's Office is an arm of, of that. We've done a lot of work on this and, um, I think that as a council, we, you know, are obligated and charged to really look at this and come up with some kind of a plan to be able to fund this in some way, not gonna say it's all in twenty twenty-two. Um, but I think that, you know, we are, uh, investing in a study and, you know, as interesting, when you were talking just earlier about you had proposed this before, which, you know, I didn't, I, I wasn't aware of that, but that's something the council, you know, we're all on board, we're investing in a salary study, and we, we wanna make this right. And, uh, same with the Sheriff's Department, you know, I think that, uh, our public safety people should be one of the most, uh, one of the best compensated, uh, agencies in the state. And I think with Porter County with, I mean, we're blessed with the situation we have is to find a way to make it happen. And I think we need to come up with a way to, uh, uh, I mean, not to put, you know, anybody on the spot here, but just, I think we, we have some work to do. And, um, uh, I think it's a priority to make sure that this county, you know, uh, remains a jewel of Indiana and to be a model, especially when it comes to safety. Uh, not just, uh, people, uh, feeling safe but actually being safe in this county. And it's, Prosecutor's Office is a big part of that. So, uh, I appreciate all the work you did, um, you know, uh, you don't have to sell, sell us on the need. You know, the selling is a long time coming and you were kind of, like, you kind of inherited this, you're trying to get it to where it needs to be. And I agree, we need to be competitive. And the hiring pool is deteriorating everywhere. And, um, somehow, some way, we need to stand, we need to set ourselves apart, you know, I think. Uh, we need to help with our department heads to be able to do that, uh, to attract quality candidates. I mean, pay is one thing, but quality of life overall, I think, will attract people to wanna even uproot and wanna move here. Cause we don't have, uh, Valparaiso Law School anymore. Uh, we've lost that luxury. Uh, people, like you said, people go to Law School here, they like Valparaiso and they stay. So, the hiring is gonna be a lot more competitive, um, and, um, I just wanna say, I mean, we are investing in that, I think it's long overdue, uh, but it's time we do that. But, um, as a council, we have some work to do.
I'm assuming so, like, to come talk to our staff, uh, what they do and what they do on a daily basis?
Yeah, then they're...
They're a clock, is it, I said it all there?
I would hope so, I have a hundred thousand dollar study, so I would hope that they get, dive in to everybody in this county.
Do we have any idea when that's going to start, the study?
Commissioners have to sign the contract, approve it, sign the contract and, I, you know, hopefully over the next month or so.
If you're not aware, Gary, we've, uh, offered up a recommendation to the commissioners to sign a contract to do just that next year. And, uh, based on your research before, where you did that on your own for your department, uh, reached out to the same firm that actually we're suggesting for the commissioners to do, uh, to do the, the study with. Um, and so we are anxious to hear, uh, what they've, uh, come back with. And it is a six to eight month process where they will dig into each and every department, talk very specifically about, uh, job duties, responsibilities, titles and so forth. And, and they're the experts at what they do and they deal with, you know, uh, many, many, many communities throughout the state of Indiana, if not beyond. And, uh, I think that'll be very, very helpful, uh, as we take a look at, uh, kinda correcting this error that's developed over long, you know, longer time.
No, I'm all for it. I got that prototype from the, so, I am, if I recall correctly, they have the update they're studying like every two years. So, if things are fine, that's fine. I think they can be adjusted.
And, Mike, I, I know that you are very biased.
I don't know why, but I got a soft spot for public safety.
So, yeah, I'm not sure where it comes from.
I know you all do too. I mean, it's very important.
We, we all do, but I think it all matters to quality of life, that, um, ultimately, don't we want hardly anybody being prosecuted because we want hardly anybody being arrested? And how, how does that happen? I think it's having opportunities in communities, having high quality of life, you know, having thriving communities, you know, like Valparaiso that, you know, there's, there's jobs, there's great schools, you know, there's great, you know, everything, right? It all, it all matters. We, we, I don't want, I, I don't know how to say this properly, I don't want you to have ten more prosecutors, I want you to have the right number to go after the, the real bad people. Um, and I want people to have jobs and they don't have to turn to crime, right?
What I was saying about the mistake I made, I would rather have three lawyers at ninety-nine thousand dollars a year than three hundred and sixty-eight. Because I'd rather focus on the more serious crimes, uh, so that those are prosecuted, um, quickly, efficiently, and that we're, we are making the right decisions in charging those and then following.
Gary, let me ask you a question, just to kinda, it's a philosophical question, to say, anytime we're dealing with public safety, there, there's always a, uh, you know, debate or exchange about, is it more about the manpower or is it more about the salary? And knowing that, I mean, you want as many as you can have, paid as much as you possibly can, but if you were to wrestle with that, what would your thought be?
I would say it's a little bit of both. You know, I think you can have too many people, I mean, stepping over one another and then nobody really has to work hard because it's, it's kind of both, you know, actually. At the same time, uh, if we're trying a serious case, uh, we need, um, a seriously experienced trial lawyer to handle that case. The defense lawyers, even lawyers who come through these early days. Uh, and so, my lawyer that's been a lawyer for five or six years, there's a huge difference. The other thing that's happened is, and I was one of them, is that criminal defense lawyers are being the best training in the country because they can afford to bring in the best experts, the best psychiatrists, the best consultants, the best experts on how to cross-examine. When we have a trial now, I do the cross-examination because I've been taught by the best experts across the country. So, I write out the questions so the lawyer that's in court, all they have to do is read the questions. If I did the cross-examination, Jeremy, you could cross-examine, cross-examine somebody in court. All you have to do is read the questions.
Oh, then I'm getting a job.
Truth, you could do it too, everyone. Cause if the answer isn't yes, they're in trouble.
So, but at the end, it, it's, yeah, we have to make priority decisions every year with the amount of money that we have. So, but, all right. Um, so, we got the, um, general fund in front of us, it, it's the same, you know, um, cause he is asking for, you know, raises and he's asking for, you know, right now, three new prosecutors, three new court managers, we'll, we'll definitely push that off till next Thursday. So, right in front of you, the number is one million, one hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and forty-one dollars, general fund. Motion second. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Prosecutor forfeiture fund, it's like there's a decrease of, uh, ten thousand dollars.
The whole thing's being wiped out.
What am I looking at?
No, the whole thing's being wiped out.
It's the same.
Can we just leave it the same or is, how did that affect you?
It's not money.
Oh, it's a difference.
You know, that doesn't sit well with me when someone says it's our money. But, um, this is how it was submitted, so, it, it, it was zeroed out. So, we advertised high enough...
What did I zero out?
Um, this is the prosecutor forfeiture fund.
Oh, no, 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 we, we zeroed that out because, um, uh, forfeiture or future?
No, forfeiture. The twelve thirty-four fund.
Oh, yes, I know, yeah. We're going to, we're actually use that money for a different reason, so I meant to zero that out.
So, it's, then it is five thousand.
It is five thousand, two million, I just said ten thousand dollars. And if that's the, yes, I'm sorry, yes, I zeroed that out.
So, before you use any of that, you'll have to come back for an additional appropriation?
Right.
Okay?
Or do we need to open?
And you don't wanna do that now?
No, I don't need that now, yeah. Whether what my plan is to...
I'd move to accept the ten thousand reduction.
Motion second to, um, make this budget zero. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. So, I'm a little lost in the order here. Um, so, the next one in the book is the prosecutor deferral.
Yeah, twenty-five oh one.
Yeah, twenty-five oh one. Yeah.
You got a different...
All right, some things have changed, I got an old one. All right, sorry, so the prosecutor deferral, looks like, uh, number's the same?
What was it?
Motion second, discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Um, deferral, um, why is that, is that the same thing? I'm sorry. Why, I'm sorry. Yeah.
That was twenty-five oh one we did, no, that was twenty-five oh three.
Yeah, but my number was wrong, you guys, I was at the bottom. What did, yeah, three hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight for the deferral. I think I might, I don't know if I even said a number, so. Motion?
Aye.
Sorry, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Just looking at the bottom of the previous page, sorry. Looks like pre-trial now?
Yes.
Um...
What question I have, yeah.
Need to increase, um, your, uh, medical level, that's because there's a two thousand dollar increase, right? So, that was with the commissioners, yeah.
So, why isn't that reflected now?
So move.
Oh, we need to increase it.
So, we should increase that.
Yeah.
Put it to the nineteen three seventy-six.
So, can you make that adjustment?
Move to accept the one oh eight four eighty-two.
Motion on the floor.
Second.
Second, discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Can we take just a quick second on that?
Yes.
So, Vicki, help me understand on the insurance increase. I know it's about two thousand dollars for all employees that are on insurance. Is that not fair to say?
Uh, it's a two thousand dollar increase in the appropriation for the budgets or funds that have employees in their special funds outside of the general fund or outside of the other funds that contribute to health insurance. The vast majority of county employees have the health insurance paid for not in these special funds, okay? But if you have a special fund and you have an employee in there, you're expected to appropriate the monies.
So, how about for the folks who are in the other funds? Could it be the general fund?
Mm-hmm.
And are, or have all departments accounted for that? My primary question is have all the departments accounted for that two thousand dollar increase?
Um, for the most part, yes. Yes. The ones who have employees in their special funds. Now, with respect to the other sources of funding, the general fund, foundation budget fund, um, let, there's been no increases proposed yet.
But that is lion's share.
And that's, yeah, that's the lion's share of what funds.
So, we haven't taken into consideration those increases then?
None have been proposed.
But yet we know the insurance is gonna go up two thousand dollars.
You know, I'm going to have to defer to the commissioners on how they came up with that two thousand. We weren't, you know, really part of it, but I think it was, they looked at the overall expenditures and, uh, maybe worked with their consultant to adjust that seventeen three eighty figure up to the nineteen three seventy-six figure.
Right, which would lead, would lead me to believe that they're anticipating a two thousand dollar per employee increase that we're gonna have to pay next year that we didn't pay this year.
And again, we, we get to this, this, the issue with our health insurance fund, it's a, a moving target, we don't know what the claims are going to come in at. But we, the Otter's Office, have been sounding some concerns about this health insurance fund. We're spending more than we've been taking in and we're whittling the cash balance. Your decision earlier this year to transfer the, that seven hundred thousand really did help shore it up, but we're watching this fund closely, it's not in crisis mode right now.
I guess I'm, I'm saying if we're not, uh, anticipating or budgeting for it, then we're gonna be surprised by it. Am I right in my thinking?
We believe there should be increased appropriations in these other sources as well.
And I would, intuitively, that would make sense, and the commissioner had to come up with that two thousand dollar figure somehow, some way.
Correct.
And I would guess they're saying anticipated costs next year are gonna be two thousand dollars per employee more than they were in twenty twenty-one.
Which, if we followed that, I think, Mike, where you're going is, yeah, we probably, I don't even wanna begin to know the difference what's in the, the, the fee-based funds compared to what's in the general funds. And if you multiply that number by the two thousand dollar increase, we might as well just pack all up and go home now.
But it's not a two thousand dollar increase, right?
For each employee in the general fund.
Two hundred dollar increase per person?
Two thousand for the year.
For the year, I mean.
Which, historically, I mean, it, we don't really, we don't really divide that, whether it's, whatever it was, fifteen thousand, seventeen thousand, now nineteen thousand dollars into the large number. It's, we've always kinda looked at maybe the trending of it and then, okay, we gotta budget nine million, we gotta budget ten million, we gotta budget eleven million. You know, oh, it's getting out of control, we gotta change some things. We're not, you know, it hasn't been broken down to my understanding ever into that. Now, I know the commissioners just made some policy changes with the, you know, maybe that's their, and they'll be in front of us Tuesday.
Also a signal that costs are going up.
Yes. They've made some policy changes, um, offering a, a, a different plan option to, I believe, to hope to save...
Absolutely, yeah.
Money, um, and, you know, with the increased cost going forward.
They're here Tuesday.
They're here Tuesday, yes, we could definitely dive in, so...
And I will also say that, that, um... And I will also say that appropriation of seventeen-three-eighty has been in place like that for a number of years. And it hasn't been adjusted until now.
Uh, what is today?
Today's Tuesday. They're here Thursday.
I'm confused, yeah, this Thursday, yeah, I'm, I'm a mess, I'm already thinking of next week, so. Mike?
That's a good question, I didn't realize that.
It's not going down.
No. So, it's not cheap to run county government, takes revenue, so. Twenty-five oh three voted on that, right?
No, I think we had the motion.
Motion a sec. All in favor of the number, the one oh eight four eight two, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, prosecutor, check, deferral. Got to make sure I'm not on different pages here. Does that, looks like a little increase, no, that's a decrease, right?
Right.
Of thirty-five hundred dollars?
Right.
For fifteen hundred dollars, is that correct?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, prosecutor, PCA, the same?
Motion.
Second.
Motion second, discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, domestic violence grant, same?
Move to approve.
Under eighty thousand dollars, motion.
Second.
Second, discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, stop grant prosecutor.
Motion.
Second.
For the same, thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and ten, motion second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, OWI, fatal drugs, looks like grant, looks, zero.
Let that grant go away then.
Right now it's zero.
Second.
Motion is second at zero right now, discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, prosecutor four D. The number's the same there.
Second.
There's a motion a second on the floor, Gary, you have some attached information here.
I am asking for some raises, I'm not even going to compare other counties, I'm going to compare with this county. My staff is woefully underpaid compared to the court's office, criminal prosecutor's office, they're the lowest paid office. They are paralegals, they are trained very effectively, they work their butts off, we're giving some people like to the court's office, to all the other places. We are actually the side of the prosecutor's office that can make the criminal cases go down by giving people their child support so they don't have to do things to provide their kids food. So we collected last year almost fourteen million dollars in child support. We're generally right around there every year. My girls, I'm not asking for new employees, I'm not asking for attorney raises, I'm asking if they be brought up to the same level that the rest of the county is. I can pay for that, I have about seventeen thousand, fifty-two dollars allocated in the general fund for a particular prosecutor that we don't need anymore. So we can use that, and then the rest of it can come out of the eighty-nine-seven fund. Just to kind of get them up to where everyone else is. And I provided a sheet, I believe you have that, that just kind of shows, you know, what I'm asking specifically. My administrative assistant makes forty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars. She manages three attorneys as well as training for all staff and handles everything all by herself. It's very, it's very hard for me to explain what my office does, and that was in my other offices. But they work and they train, the state is making a computer system, starting in November of two thousand twenty-two, they're already in training every week toward that. It's very big to a computer.
But what is her pay, your assistant?
So she makes forty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine, I'm asking that she make fifty-one hundred and sixty-nine, and I think that's pretty comparable with the administrative systems of all the other counties.
There's a note here, the county gets back two-thirds of anything spent from the general fund, that's paying for the bond.
Correct.
So.
So, so if my general fund budget's two hundred thousand dollars, let me do one hundred thousand dollars because the math is in here. The county gets back sixty-seven thousand dollars back into the general fund for every dollar that is spent in September is back. So we're actually not, we're actually saving money in a way, right? Because if you give us a hundred thousand, you really only given us thirty-three, we're just borrowing from you.
Salesman.
Honestly, they're one of the most effective child support offices in the state. They compare their cases they handle with the amount of revenue they collect. So they have to perform in order for them to get their money back from their company. And you know, it's a great office.
So, or.
Those are full-time people?
I'll just say, I'll just say it now and tee it up for not this Thursday, the next Thursday. For me, for me, it's going to be budgets like this that I look at really close and first, that I'm going to fight for, that you found money to pay for raises for people, you know, and it's basically not affecting the general fund, and you found places to pay for people's raises. To me, as you can see, it's highlighted and highlighted, and, you know, it's all what you did. So, these are the ones that, to me, are going to be easy for my vote, so, to begin with.
Thank you for all you guys do.
So, but, you know, keeping that pace to pile everything on next Thursday.
Next Thursday is going to be really stressful.
The general fund is, you know, it's the same right now for four D at fifty-one, five hundred eleven thousand, three hundred and seven dollars, is that? Motion second, further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, it's like incentive, four D incentive, it's the same.
Second.
Motion a second, is there anything out of here, anything changing? Motion a second, discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, prosecutor four D. It's like there's an increase here, thirteen-five?
Agreements, agreements, thirteen-five? It went from fifteen hundred to fifteen thousand, was that maybe a typo? Oh, go with, that'd be better.
So you want the same number, or?
Move to approve, two oh seven, four forty-seven.
That. Don't, motion a second for two oh seven.
Billy, you got to get that motion quick.
Four four seven?
Correct the.
Motion a second, discussion?
Yes, the two oh seven, four four seven is the new number.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Laura, can I ask you a quick question, please? Just to kind of clarify on, because certainly wouldn't disagree that based on your caseworkers and your admin, it appears that they are woefully underpaid, I don't disagree with you. Now, as you, and I know, or I guess I'm asking whether or not, did you happen to check, or do you know how that compares to other counties? Are they as woefully and obviously low-paid, or, so did you check some of the neighbor, and what did you find?
So, on average, a child support caseworker makes between thirty-nine and forty thousand in similar-sized counties to the new. Yeah.
The other county I've used is Madison County.
Okay, so you didn't do it formally, but that's kind of how you came up with your proposal?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience in waiting around.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He's next, guys.
Recorder.
In the spirit of cooperation, we're going to take a thirty-minute break, we'll be back.
No, we're not.
No, that would just screw it down.
Looks like general fund, number showing the same at one hundred ninety-seven, one twenty-nine?
Move to accept.
It's a motion and a second on the floor. Were we going to reduce that one in discussions from prior discussions? The, your general fund?
General funds.
And move like another twenty-five thousand into the perpetuation?
Yeah, so what I, and we were told not to do anything with the.
Right, correct, I understand that, I understand, yeah.
We changed line item eleven eighty-nine to one hundred thousand. Is that about?
It doesn't break ours.
Wait a minute, the salary line item?
Yes.
I don't have eleven, oh, that's a whole thing, I see.
Perpetuation fund, to move that item to one hundred thousand.
You were going to move, so you're going to decrease your salaries by twenty-five thousand?
What do you need to?
And moving.
I'm increasing the, so I would be, whatever that difference is between what I'm proposing, is the perpetuation fund's going to have a hundred thousand dollars. Last year we did seventy-five thousand dollars, this year we'll do, what I'm proposing is that we make that up to one hundred thousand.
The salaries to a hundred thousand?
Into one hundred thousand.
In the perpetuation fund?
Perpetuation.
Does that lower the general fund?
That should lower the general fund.
By that same amount?
Like.
Fifteen thousand?
Six, no.
Yep, fifteen thousand, one oh four.
Is that right?
Alright, I thought in discussions we had, you were looking at twenty-five thousand, the reduction.
We gave twenty-five, or excuse me, seventy-five thousand dollars last year, so an additional twenty-five would be the, up to a hundred thousand, but.
Chuck, is what, are what you're referring to, the using the perpetuation fund money, then requesting the recorder to offset the, to pay general fund expenses?
Yes.
Yeah, because you, let, you, since I've been here, the, generally there's been negotiations between the council and the auditors on this to use perpetuation fund monies to pay general fund expenses of the county recorder's office. And what the law requires is typically that the recorder come to the council with an affidavit, and then the council will consider the affidavit and then vote to, because the law requires that the auditor present that and approve that to the council by way of an affidavit. So is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, and I thought.
You're basically.
Last year we gave seventy-five.
Seventy-five.
This year we gave a hundred thousand. An additional twenty-five would be a hundred thousand.
Another, well.
We're getting a hundred thousand this year.
That's what I proposed.
An additional twenty-five thousand, so wouldn't that decrease your general fund by twenty-five thousand?
By.
It wouldn't be a hundred thousand either.
I mean, so you're moving from seventy-five thousand to a hundred, forget all the other numbers, then wouldn't that, just adding another twenty-five thousand, wouldn't that decrease your general fund by twenty-five thousand? That's, no.
No, we gave seventy-five last year, now I don't know where the eighty-four came from.
I don't, I don't know where it was.
But that's what we voted on, if I remember correctly, is that correct, Harold? It was seventy-five last year.
That's right, okay. I can't remember where the number was, I just remember the process.
Vicki knows.
Well, for years, there were other salaries in this fund, and so last year we added the seventy-five to the existing number. So that's how we ended up with eighty-four, eight ninety-six, that's where it is today.
Added the seventy-five.
So if you do a twenty-five more, you're going to be at one oh nine, eight ninety-six, and then I assume you would subtract the twenty-five from the general fund. Is that all jive?
I believe that was what we had discussed, talking to the commissioners, talking to you.
Yeah, that's what we're, that's fine.
Are you sure?
So what'd you say it was?
It's right on the screen here.
One nine, eight nine six.
Yeah.
So it's a hundred thousand, nine thousand one. But that also changes your general fund, we'll now have to vote on that again because it's twenty-five thousand.
We never voted on that, I don't know, we never voted on it, so.
The reason there's a difference, back, fears back, the difference with the nine thousand and change is like, like the auditor said, there was raises that we paid for, for all of our employees in the office that totaled about that much, that's why there's a discrepancy. So when the seventy-five thousand was added last year, it was added to that amount to bring it to eighty-four, eight ninety-six.
Okay.
I follow that.
No less?
No, nope, all good.
No, as long as you're on the same page, that number works.
Alright.
Okay, I'd move to approve the general fund add a twenty-five thousand dollar reduction.
Second.
Hundred and seventy-two, one two nine?
Yes, sir.
Motion a second, discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, so then that, what's the new number on the perpetuation? That should then increase by the. You hadn't built anything in there yet, so it would be three twenty-three, two thirty-six?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Because nothing was built in.
Well, no, we increased the.
Just now?
Yes.
But nothing prior?
We good?
So the.
My budget went down in the perpetuation fund for twenty-four twenty-two.
Yeah, eighteen, five hundred. Okay, move to approve the three twenty-three, two thirty-six.
Second.
Motion a second on the three twenty-three, two thirty-six, I just got a quick question, though, why, why the reductions here in contractual? I mean, I see you did make your reductions, furniture, pictures.
Increase in the rebinding, you have a decrease in contractual services for part of, part of the media software conversion project that we're doing in the BASS office. Uh, council, our, our, the county's a good one last year, so that's why you're seeing the savings there.
Alright, do we hold on? Motion a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, how is that project coming along?
Actually, they've got everything scanned in our office, they've got everything scanned in the basement, which is, you know, it's weird as it looks. We've got stuff scanned up that we have stored in the sheriff's department. Everything in my office that belongs to us, no matter where it's at, has been scanned. So, I haven't answered your question fully yet. But I would say that we're close to halfway, they're still doing all the processes, quality control and that sort of thing. We are hoping to have all of that on our computer systems at the beginning of January.
Completely done?
So that's where we're at right now.
Great, thank you, man.
We're really excited about it, and thanks for helping us.
And the cost came in, were you, I mean, any less, right, where you guys had, they had?
Yeah.
Quoted?
Increases, so.
No decreases or anything, no?
It might even be a little bit less than what they quote, so.
You're saving us money all around, let's go.
I'm trying.
So, do we have, do we have to write that agreement back up then?
Yeah.
Harold?
What'll happen is, is if you just, the recorder has to submit an affidavit and, uh, requesting to be used out of the perpetuation fund, and then we vote on that, and then by ordinance, and then pass a ordinance, so we can do that if we need to.
Perfect, alright, I think we're done, we cover you?
And I, Jeremy, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
The affidavit that we used last year, do you still have a copy of that? If not, I can't, I, I.
You emailed it to me, so I should be able to find it.
If you, if you don't, it should be in my budget from a call we had last year.
Yeah, I got a copy if you need it, I still have that stuff, so.
So we'll get that all taken care of, if we've got it out. You guys have to bypass the bylaws somehow, do two readings of one reading.
Yeah, we'll, yep. We'll figure it out, and then you get past this one, you got to let it, let it build up for a little bit, and then you say you had something else in the future too?
We have that other project that, uh, we're going to have to rebinding.
At a time. Alright, thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Alright, what do we got left? We got auditor.
Airport.
Auditor, airport, auditor. Alright, auditor, general fund.
So the general fund, I'm requesting, I'm moving around a few things, but I'm requesting an overall increase. So, the general fund, I'm requesting, I'm moving around a few things, but I'm requesting an overall increase, um, that nets out to sixteen thousand and eighty dollars, and the vast majority of this is for increased contractual and software maintenance costs. Uh, we have a number of contracts for, uh, largely software maintenance, including what you see right there is our financial and payroll system. Uh, we also have the property tax, we have our cost allocation plan, uh, our fixed asset plan, uh, a look-up plan, and, um, actuarial study that's now required as part of our GAAP reports, and then there'll be a new contract that, you'll have to, um, add that deals with the, um, third-party vendor that is taking over the, um, employee's health insurance portal, we want them to prepare the federally required ten ninety-five C forms, so when you add up all of these costs, they come out to a, a little over two hundred thousand that we will have to pay, we have no, we'll, we'll have to pay that, so, um, what I'm proposing is the increase, as you might see, in the software rental that would bring it to a hundred and fifty-three thousand, and then the increase in the contractual that would bring it to twenty-six thousand. And by moving some other numbers around, the overall impact comes out to sixteen thousand eighty dollars. Now, we look at it as a general fund, and that is in the general fund, yes, and I can talk about, uh, the other fund in just a moment.
Well, so, wow, you just, my head's been there for a second, but that doesn't take much, so, I mean, I see some requesting a hundred and fifty due to increased costs, requesting a hundred and fifty-three, so that, that increases only four thousand dollars.
Correct.
But then your request in twenty-six due to increased costs in contractual services.
Okay, what I did was, say in the software rental, it is currently budgeted at one, um, thirty-eight, but in order to submit a budget that keeps the bottom line the same, I moved around other line items, so I already increased that line to one forty-two by keeping the overall amount.
By decreasing maintenance revenues.
But we do need to increase that even further, to bring it to a hundred and fifty-three.
For the bottom line?
Bottom line, it would be an increase of sixteen thousand and eighty dollars, and these are contractual costs that, really, these are fixed costs, we're, we need to pay these.
And that, and I know you've got a couple perpetuation funds and stuff, that can't be.
I don't have a perpetuation.
Well, okay, we're non-reverting, you always beat me up with.
Yes, and I, I want to talk about that in just a moment, or you want me to address that next?
Well, I, I know you, you're, both of these, and we've talked about it a little bit, Vicky, but you do have balances in both of these funds. So.
Well, let's talk about the ineligible homestead fund.
Correct.
I can do what the prosecutor's doing, stand up before you, um. I am requesting special raises, as county auditor, I'm in a strange position, because I know how tight the finances are, but as these budgets were coming in, I'm seeing other departments requesting special raises, and I think that as an office that has taken on an incredibly increased amount of workload in the last two years, uh, we should have some consideration as well.
I'm not sure that's where I was going.
Yes, well, um, the issue here is that in the last two years, the auditor's office has assumed the responsibility over, um, the, the, the CARES Act grant administration, and now ARPA, every county auditor in the state has to assume more reporting, um, the, the requirements with those two major grants, at the same time, uh, we are now a GAAP county, and of the, other GAAP counties, it's, to the best of my knowledge, every single one contracted out for the GAAP report, we have chosen to take this, uh, study and to do it in-house, even if we were to contract out, there would be an enormous amount of additional work, um, that would be required of the, um, county auditor's office, but the workload has intensified quite a bit, because we're doing it in-house, we are also handling all of the county foundation statements in-house, we're also preparing the foundation tax returns in-house, my estimates, and I don't think they're at all exaggerated, is that in three years, we have saved the county about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in just those three areas, we also do the tissue utilization study in-house, and over the course of the eight years, um, that's about another a hundred and sixty thousand, so we've saved the general fund about six hundred and ten thousand. I'm only going on saying all this is because if you are going to be giving special raises, um, there will be some very bad discrepancies that will be created, for example, you just heard that the clerk is requesting some special raises, her finance director will end up making more than the equivalent of my finance director, and that really is a situation that really can't, um, be allowed, in my opinion, I'm not disparaging the other employee in the other office, but when we talk about fairness, um, we're not the mini auditor's office, we are the auditor's office, and we have taken on a, an enormous amount of additional workload, so, I didn't put a dollar figure to the special raises, because I wanted to see how everything was going, but, uh, if you are so inclined to do so, I will be presenting some special raises, and it will be taken out of the ineligible homestead fund, I've been very frugal with this fund, because it was drawn down quite a bit, and I chose to not spend much out of the ineligible, uh, ineligible homestead fund, in fact, a number of years ago, you grant, you granted me an employee, and you had it be placed in this fund, I don't ever want to be in the position of saying my fund has dried up, so now I have to come before you, and now you have to put this person back in the general fund, so I haven't filled that position, but I am of the position that we do need to fill this position in the ineligible homestead fund, so we're starting to see some pressures on this fund, I think, I would not be proposing this if I didn't think it was sustainable, because even though I'm only here for another year, I do not want, um, my predecessor to stand before you and say, well, we drew down this fund, and now I have to come before you for the general fund, so I'm still being very, very frugal with the ineligible homestead fund, and so, in the ineligible homestead fund, I am requesting this, and I do have an apology to give you, it's not before you. Um, the medical and life insurance does need to increase to the nineteen through seventy-six if we fill that position, and I, I, I apologize, I did not include that in there, um, I'm also requesting eight thousand dollars for furniture and fixtures, because we have chairs that are falling apart, and I have been told that they are duct-taking some of the chairs, that was not in there, because at the time of budget submission, um, we got some word that some other departments were getting rid of some furniture, and so I thought we could just kind of snag it, but that didn't turn out, um, and, um, now I'm going to say something that's really wrong, okay, um, dues and subscriptions, I am asking for an increase, I think I have it down there for, to thirty-eight, we can just increase that to thirty-five, that's because I'm proposing that Porter County join, um, the National Association of Counties, I've had the, um, good fortune of being involved with NACO this year because of the ARPA grants, I think that we, as a county, ought to join NACO, the good thing about joining NACO is that the benefits would be given to everyone, it's just that I'm proposing to put it in my budget, it could be in the commissioner's budget for all that money, in other words, if we get word that NACO is sponsoring a online meeting with, say, Homeland Security, and they do, they have access to top people throughout the country, uh, we would have EMS participate in, or the sheriff's department, for example, it wouldn't just be for the auditor's office, and the even better thing about NACO is that if we pay the dues this year, uh, they will give us the remainder of twenty-twenty-one dues for free, and, and we would have all of twenty-two dues paid for, so, I would like to come before your meeting in October to request a transfer, so that we can join NACO this year, get the appropriation in place for next year, so that, assuming the NACO membership, um, is of value, then we can continue it into twenty-twenty-three.
Then how much was the NACO membership?
Uh, yes, the NACO membership is a total of, um, three thousand two hundred and eighty-seven dollars, and again, that would be for all individuals, and I guess I would be the one who would keep track of, you know, the alerts that would say, uh, okay, there's, there's an, we know there's gonna be meetings on assuming Congress passes some kind of an infrastructure, we would bring in the commissioner's stormwater and highway, and anyone else who would want to join in, because the value of this information, I have been really, really impressed by it, and if it turns out that it's not worth it, then let's like yank the appropriation next year, so.
Does that stand for again, Vicky?
Pardon?
National Associations of Counties.
Yes.
National Association.
They're like the AIC, but on a national level.
I didn't even know that existed. Which I, I, I agree with it, I, I've always thought, it was kind of been discouraged up here, but I wish I would have got involved in the Indiana Associations of County when I first got on this, and I would encourage any new members, the younger ones, get involved, because our laws are passed in Indiana, they know what's going on, they know the changes, and they turn around and lobby, so they're, they're just intimately involved in how counties are run and legislations that's passed and changed, and then, the national level, with everything going on, right now is probably no better time with, with the CARES Act, with the ARP, with a possible infrastructure bill for thirty-eight hundred dollars to have access to the knowledge at the national level, it's just, we, we should be educating ourselves to do a better job up here as council members.
And one thing about the ARPA legislation, um, unlike CARES Act, we had to work through the state agencies for all that reimbursement, you may have heard other counties and cities and towns complain that the rules seem to keep changing at that level, what NACO did on county's behalf was that they lobbied extensively with ARPA, counties should not go through their state agencies, counties deal directly with treasury, and so that's been pretty interesting, um, because we, we avoid that middleman, it's a lot more direct, we already have that sixteen million dollars sitting here, uh, at our discretion, we don't have to go through all that back and forth, submitting the claims and all that.
I think that one's.
Of course, the big work is coming up.
Yeah, I think that one's a no-brainer, but, so, you're going to?
So.
Right now, or you're gonna present later, some?
Council meeting in October, I'll be coming for a transfer to sign up for NACO, but then you can approve the appropriation in the twenty-twenty-two budget for the twenty-twenty-three dues, so, or we could wait till next year, it, it doesn't matter.
So, that's fine, we can do the, we can, we can do the transfer, you're paying for it out of your non-reverting fund, I, to me, I'm just one person, but it's, it's not costing the general fund, and it's for everybody to use, so, alright, you're gonna present some raises?
I don't have them right now, no, I wanted to see how the discussion was going.
Okay, so.
As others have presented their cases, uh, I think it would be perfectly in line for you to.
I do too, Vicky.
She doesn't know, though.
Doesn't mean it.
She doesn't know the numbers yet, right?
I wanted to see how everything was going.
Alright, so, are, okay, then.
So, the, the general fund, is that, we haven't voted on that yet.
Well, I think.
So, yes.
That you've, you've indicated that for general fund requests with other funds, you're, you're saying there's a willingness down here to use these other funds for something, or?
Well, your direction to, to departments.
And some did.
Have some good input on that.
Some did follow it very well.
Where, uh, if you have access to other funds, identify them, um, and yes, I do have the ineligible homestead fund, we are making ongoing changes to that fund, the reason why I haven't utilized it extensively is because I saw the revenue kind of dropping, and I didn't want to draw it down, but if you are, um, asking me to pay for some of the software rental and contractual increases, I will agree to pay that out of the ineligible homestead fund, however, I really want to emphasize this, these are, this is our property tax system, this is our payroll financial, if we don't pay these costs, we're not gonna make payroll, we're not gonna have property taxes, I believe that those kinds of contractual costs should come out of an operating fund, i.e. the general fund, not a discretionary fund, things like furniture should come out of a discretionary fund, unless you want to put in the general.
So what's that increase?
Sixteen thousand and, uh, well, there, um, sixteen thousand eighty dollars, we could put it in the ineligible homestead fund, but please make a note, next year, when things get back to normal, put it back in the general fund, because it is an ongoing contractual cost, and, and these are costs that we, we can't avoid, quite frankly.
I, I suggest we put it in the general fund now.
I agree with you, so that we're not, I mean, we've seen, today, we've seen some funds that we've gotten out of hand of pushing things into other funds, um, I think chairs, I think you're spot on, dues and subscriptions, stuff like that, but I, I have to agree with you and Mike and Sylvia, let's, let's keep that increase in the general fund. Um, but, so then, if we just keep that increase in the general fund, what's the general fund's bottom line then, with nine-two-two-six-one-nine?
I believe so.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion a second to approve the auditor's general fund at nine hundred twenty-two thousand six hundred nineteen dollars, further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, so then, what other increases, then, then, you want to leave the plat?
We'll just leave that.
At thirty-two thousand, so there's a, there's a.
Motion.
Motion a second for the GIS plat mapping at thirty-two thousand, motion second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, so non-reverting, though, you're saying put?
I'd like to restore the medical life insurance, if we do fill that vacancy, I took it down to zero, because I didn't feel comfortable.
So that's the nineteen three, uh, three seven six, but then you want to take, put that back in there, so then you want to take your office supplies?
No, um, I'm sorry, um, mine four-four-four-zero, that's furniture and fixtures.
Okay, it's not on our.
No, we'll have to add it.
So can you add your, yeah, four hundred series or four thousand, whatever you, to eight thousand?
And then dues and subscriptions to thirty-five hundred, so it's just three thousand increase.
Thirty-five hundred?
But that will be for the following year, I'll ask for the transfer this, this month.
Out of this fund?
Yes, out of this fund, so we can join NACO right away, we get, well, basically, two months free, and then, next year, it will be covered, and I really, I'm, I'm really excited about this, I think the level of information is going to be outstanding for all.
Well, will we have access to, I mean, is there like, membership areas on that website of NACO that we'll, we'll get to see things, I mean?
I think what will have to happen is that, well, there'll have to be some kind of a clearinghouse of a communication, like, um, or, or anyone who has an email who wants to get notices of what NACO's talking about, I've already participated in a few meetings with treasury, with national lobbyists, I, I mean, I didn't speak or anything, but I sat in and listened, and it was amazing, and I think with the infrastructure bill, and maybe some other bills coming up.
Makes all sense in the world, Vicky.
Yeah.
Alright, so that.
Make the motion to approve the two eighty-one, six thirteen.
Motion.
Second.
Second, discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, elected official training, five thousand dollars.
Move, motion.
What's that? Motion, that's the same thing, so, motion a second on the floor, that's the same thing, that comes out of the recorder, um, fund, so that's, it's spread out just by statute.
Right.
And we've decided to put it into the offices that can use that training money, and it was, I think we did deduct it last year from their line items too, so.
Yes, we did.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, debt funds, jail, lease, um, two million nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars, motion, second, discussion, how many more payments? Two, three, four?
Twenty-three, December, it's, the last payment is in January of twenty-twenty-four, but we always pay it in December.
So, getting close, so maybe another fourteen payment?
Come to the auditor's office and watch them make that.
So, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice seeing you this evening.
All that you do.
For everything you're doing, are we done?
We're done, we're going home. You made this poor guy wait to the end, to the end?
Taking off.
The guy with no changes had to wait to the end.
We were ready to take off, right, no pun intended.
I want to thank the council for moving my second reading to this, uh, this evening, for the most part, we had training scheduled last Thursday, so I appreciate that, thank you.
Alright, so, what do we got here, the airport general?
It's, it's really the, the same procedure we followed since becoming a binding review budget, we have included a five percent contingency for raises that normally you remove until discussion for raises come up, uh, next Thursday, but our budget does have one more increase for the aviation, we did include the commissioner's new price for the health insurance.
So that's that increase there?
Yes. Yes.
All right.
Move to approve the one-four-three-seven-eight-ten.
There's a motion of second, um, yeah, in, in glancing at some things with, with the auditor, I saw something that popped up. I think it was overtime and salaries, that you have a vacancy in salaries that you've had for quite some time?
In two thousand eight, we approached the council, and they approved some positions for us to have the flexibility to expand our workforce if needed, with the understanding that it did not cost anything additional to the taxing portion of the revenue collected. We have not moved to a twenty-four-five or twenty-four-seven yet, ironically, in two thousand eight, when we approached the board about that, what happened? We had the recession start, so that kind of changed that whole dynamic. What we do internally ourselves is at, and will be doing here in October, for, for positions that we do not have filled, we actually do a budget reduction resolution. That allows us to keep the budget the same next year. So we, we do have some positions that are unfilled, but we do reduce our own budget so we can apply for the same budget amount the following year.
But I think the, maybe the, the question that I kind of scratched my head at, but you're, while you may have a vacancy or multiple vacancies, you're, you're spending a large port, you're spending overtime though, right?
We, the way we have historically done our budgets since becoming the airport authority, we have our salaries, okay? So our salaries include mine being the only exempt position, and then we take and divide the hourly people, whatever their salary is, by twenty-eighty, which is their eighty-hour work week. So that's just procedurally, that's what we've done since nineteen ninety-one. So our hourly is only our part-time people.
How many part-time people do you have?
We do that with reception and some field staff, so right now we have three part-time receptionists, and one full, one that does twenty-four hours a week in the field.
I guess my question is overtime, what do you, what do you use the overtime for?
When we have time over eighty hours, for the most part, they're paid from that, we historically don't take out of that item until the last transfers that we do at the end of the year, as far as our board goes. So that just goes right into the, if, if there was a, a deficit in salaries, that would be transferred into that position. That's, again, just the way procedurally we've done it since ninety-one, being audited by the state all those years.
So, so Kyle, are you suggesting that overtime doesn't come out on a, I mean, if a part-time employee works overtime, they're not getting paid for that, then they're getting paid at the end of the year?
Our, our part-time people aren't working overtime, it's our salary people that we will work covering vacations and whatever. We actually maintain sixteen-hour weekdays and twelve-hour weekends days. So, covering vacations and things like that, that's when we're going to get into overtime, especially too, in the winter months when we're plowing snow.
So, so rather than have comp time, you pay the...
We pay, that's correct, as a matter of fact, I, I think it was a county's movement a few years back to move away from comp time and pay overtime.
Right.
And again, this, this is just the way we've been doing it since nineteen ninety-one, as far as those line items.
So you have an airport board?
Yes.
And when you make these moves, I mean, are they approving everything, like your reductions, you were talking about reductions?
They, they do all that, that's all procedural by the board.
Does that all go through the auditor's office, then?
No.
Yeah, because we're a quasi-governmental entity, that's why we're a, a binding review to this board. We're one of the non-appointed boards, special districts, and some libraries fall into that category under Title VI, and since becoming a binding review of this board, we've been following that same procedure, doing the five percent placeholder, if you want to call it that, because under binding review, the council cannot increase our budget, you can only approve it or lower it.
So you're also asking for a five percent rate?
And that's just the placeholder until a week from Thursday, when you decide if county employees are going to get raises. If county employees don't get raises, we don't get raises.
Where, where's the five percent on that?
It's, it's in three line items, the salary line item, and then PERF and FICA, that would be needed to increase for that five percent.
I don't see it in here either.
I can give you those numbers, salaries would be...
What is the number, what is the number of the account?
It would be one-one-one-zero, and that would be an increase of thirty-two thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars over this year, just for that five percent contingency. In addition to that, FICA would increase two thousand five hundred and four dollars, and PERF would increase three thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars. And as I mentioned, normally, the board would just remove those increases now and consider them on the final read.
Just for clarification, you did say you were asking for a five percent increase, right?
Five percent across the board, yes.
Thank you.
And that would have to, you saying that's approved by the board?
Well, it, it's really approved by you, right now the board has provided you a budget that has a five percent contingency.
Just, he, he puts it up, yeah, high, and whatever we do, he lowers it.
We can't really...
But I, I don't, I didn't have that, I don't have that in my budget.
No, I don't, it's pulled out because it's...
But I don't have a side letter that says so either, so...
Yeah, a side letter.
No, we don't have, I don't have one.
I, we, we provided that one form that had the changes on it.
Oh, we don't have...
We don't, all right, can, maybe somebody find that?
Go ahead.
I don't know where it is on...
Okay.
Did you resend that?
I can send it.
Thank you, sir.
I, I think you had to the...
Okay, all right, well, there's the, um...
A move to approve, then I know...
Airport general in front of you. At, um...
One thousand, one million four...
One million four hundred and thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and ten dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, airport came to the building, same...
That is the same.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve a three hundred and thirty-eight thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars, motion, second, discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
The only thing I would suggest is that, people that don't have changes should be at the beginning of the meeting.
Thanks.
You don't have to wait to the end of the meeting.
Well, you know, A, an airport has been, over my thirty years of coming up here, this is probably my thirtieth, I've, I've been at the front, I've been at the middle, and we were at the end because of your change, so thank you.
I'm just trying to get you to move ahead, no changes to be upfront, get them done.
And, and something I'll say with the auditor, Alphabet Groups, the Association of Counties, during COVID, we have affiliated memberships in some aviation groups, they became instrumental during the COVID condition to keep track of what's going on with Zoom, you were able to sit in on meetings and lobbying and see what was coming out of not only the Hill but Indianapolis, and it really, a, a two hundred dollar a year...
Membership.
Membership paid dividends this last year, so I, I thought I'd mention that in passing.
Exactly right.
Yep, thank you for that info, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
And I did get that email.
We got the email, I'm forwarding it right now.
I, I'll still send it to you, Joy.
Thanks.
Yeah, because I missed it, I'm sorry.
What we got?
Good evening.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you.
I just sent it to the county, the council.
All right. Well, we're mounting it up, um, for next Thursday, so we got a meeting this Thursday?
Yep.
Any, any discussion, or, um, it's going to be a long one? I, I mean, shouldn't be, I think, hopefully everybody's kind of taking some notes, and with the auditor's help as usual, we'll kind of know what the pile looks like, so, figure our way through, I mean...
What was our title?
And, I don't know, we'll give them time, they'll give it to us Thursday.
It'll all work out.
Yeah, and I would just say, you know, guys, we tried to shake it up a little bit this year, you know, listen, I don't know who will be chairman next year, that's not my point, if there's ways to improve the process every year from year to year, please, take notes at the end, let's discuss it, you know, to better improve this process from year to year, that's all. I mean, me and Mike worked and tried to jam some things together, we tried with highlighting this, we tried, I mean, we tried to pass motions on a lot of them, this one was more spread out, and, if you, if you know of a better way, you think of a better way, please, engage.
Whoever the president, they should get your votes.
No, this is my homework that I've been doing for...
I know it, man, you've done it.
No way, uh, so, yes, Madam...
So do you want a report on where we are?
Sure, where are we at?
An increase to the general fund, so far totaling three hundred seventeen thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars, that's the increase, that does not address the jail twelve-seventeen budget at all, that's...
Three hundred and seventeen so far.
So with this eight hundred thousand, is that plus the sheriff's one-point-two-ease projection, or whatever that number is?
Is that going to hurt?
No, no.
That eight hundred thousand is with that, his increase idea?
No, no.
No. Their revenue and expenditures were not in...
The revenue wasn't either.
It might be in a whole different fund. The only thing I'd like to mention about that three seventeen-two-one-six figure is that later on you'll have to approve the increase to Porter Stark, and you will have to do that, that's, and so that will increase that to four hundred and nineteen thousand seven sixteen.
Four nineteen?
Yes, so, for all practical purposes, we're at an increase of four nineteen right now to the general fund.
Can we just approve third reading right now, then?
I won't just on Thursday, you're not here.
No, you guys...
I'd like that, no, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I didn't say that.
You know, it was a long, long day, I think the next half would be long anyways, but Mike's questions tonight were spot on, I think, talking about insurance, that to my knowledge, we've never really, and you ladies, please correct me, we've always just targeted a big number when it comes to budgeting insurance out of the general fund, we've never really broken it down per person, we, we've kind of known the cost, and then we fixed that to the, the different fee-based funds, and then whatever we thought the cost was the last couple of years, oh, you know, it's running at ten million, whatever was left, we kind of just budgeted the remainder, and then if the costs weren't there, that's kind of how we grew our reserve into that fund a little bit, so, it really hasn't been an exact science in, in funding health insurance. So to Mike's point is, we're charging all these other funds that increase, we're not really charging the general fund that increase, so, I mean, if we did that, shh, you know, where we would be?
And, but, also, not, it's not just the general fund, but it's lit in Foundation Budget Fund, that's like considered those other funds. And also keep in mind, there are some departments that have employees in other funds, but they don't have insurance in their fund, for whatever reason, you know, a few years ago, the fund couldn't support it, so they were removed, and...
But that has to be mandatory.
No, that's up to you, you know, how to do that.
Yes, Tony?
I was gonna say, the, you know, historically, you guys have charged some two thousand three eighty, or the commissioners have billed three, seven two thousand three eighty for all these external funds, but traditionally, over the last couple of years, rate of reimbursement for the not, for the general fund employees, and like E-nine-one-one, all the other per, so the amount that is participating, that commissioners essentially are paying, divided by the number of employees that are actually in that portion of the, of the funding model, they end up paying about thirteen thousand dollars, so there's a pretty large discrepancy from what the, the, you know, the commissioner's portion of this cover.
Would that...
It's what external funds...
Well, that, that, would that play into the deficit that we're facing, well, not really deficit, because we do have...
I mean, sure, hell, it does, but ultimately, we're looking at it as overall.
Right, right, right.
If there's, erasing that from seven two three eighty to nineteen thousand, the actual amount that is increasing is quite minimal, in the, in the big picture.
Right.
You know, especially when you consider twenty-five oh one, the prosecutors, they can't afford that, they, they can't cover, cover that, um, right now, Expose is not able to cover it, um, we, all the incentive funds that charge, that get paid, that pay the seventeen thousand three eighty or whatever, technically, we are limited by how much we actually pay overall per body or per employee on the program, so the actual amount that we can get reimbursed from child support is tethered based on how much we actually pay. So the seven three eighty isn't necessarily a real number in those eight-eight-nine-seven, eight-eight-nine-five, eight-eight-nine-nine, any of those types of ones, or any child support reimbursement.
Hmm.
So it's just something to keep in mind, and I mean, we pulled together some of those projections for you, if you're interested.
Yes, if you would share it, any, those projections, that would be great.
And that audit's about to begin too.
Um, so it, yeah, it's, it's a lot, there's a lot of moving parts, I wouldn't, I mean, a, a number of us have been up here for some time, however we do it, we're, we still manage to have healthy cash reserves, we've managed to take care of employees, but, you know, some point in time too, you know, you got to figure out, do you tackle a department, Mike, to your point, like a prosecutor, to tackle that department at that large, I mean, that is a massive undertaking that would affect everything else we're doing during a budget session. Is there a way to piecemeal it slowly? I don't know, you know, that's, but, I'm open to any conversations at any time, guys, to, like I said, to look at everything as a whole, and break it down, and figure out how to tackle things in a couple of years, although I probably won't be here after another year, but put things in play, so...
Where are you going, Governor?
No, I'm, I'm done.
Mayor reported?
No, it's not me.
Cut, move to this man.
He's in replacement, tell him.
So, but, thank you, ladies, for the work you're doing, what, Vicky?
I gotta eat, guys.
I'm pondering what you just said.
So, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion second, see you guys Thursday.
Good job.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
I'm not opposing tonight, I'm out of here.